Before we start the meeting, I do want to read a proclamation by our governor, Tony Evers. Whereas, catalyzed in the early hours of June 28th, 1969, the Stonewall riots in the Greenwich Village neighborhood of Manhattan, New York, marked a pivotal turning point in the fight for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ rights in the United States, and laid the groundwork for June to be recognized as LGBTQ Pride Month in Wisconsin and nationwide. And whereas, members of the LGBTQ community in Wisconsin, across the nation and around the world, have collectively worked to overcome discrimination on the basis of gender and sexuality, intersected by race, ability, and class for generations, combating social stigma, demanding visibility and representation, and demonstrating incredible resilience. And whereas, over the past several decades, the state has taken critical steps toward achieving LGBTQ equity and equality, such as the passage of the nation's first law banning discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation in 1982, and the election of the LGBTQ individuals to public offices at all levels of government, including the first openly LGBTQ woman elected to the U.S. House of Representatives, and the first openly LGBTQ person elected to the U.S. Senate. And whereas, in the last few years, there has been a significant increase in anti-LGBTQ legislation introduced in state legislatures throughout the country, including Wisconsin. And as we celebrate hard-won liberties, we must commit to combating hateful rhetoric and policies that target LGBTQ Wisconsinites and LGBTQ kids in particular, and continue working to ensure that all LGBTQ people can access the support and resources they need to thrive and are treated equitably and with dignity under the law. And whereas, in June 2019, the rainbow pride flag was flown above the Wisconsin State Capitol Building for the first time in state history to send a clear and unequivocal message that the state values diversity, inclusion, intersectionality, and is a welcoming and inclusive place for all. And whereas, in an iteration of the widely-recognized rainbow pride flag, the Progress Pride Flag, which was created to increase visibility and advocacy for marginalized communities, which were the LGBTQ community, and includes additional stripes forming a chevron pattern that represents LGBTQ individuals of color and the transgender community, as well as those who are living with and who have lost their lives to HIV/AIDS, will be flown above the state Capitol for the second year in a row. And whereas this month, as we celebrate Pride Month in Wisconsin and raise a pride flag over our state Capitol for the fifth year in a row, we are reminded that every Wisconsinite deserves to stand boldly in their truth without fear of persecution, judgment, or discrimination. Now therefore, I, Tony Evers, Governor of the State of Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim June 2023 as LGBTQ Pride Month throughout the state of Wisconsin. And I commend this observance to all our state's presidents. It seemed like a good way to start the meeting. We are going to start with a spotlight. And our first order of business here is to recognize a much-loved and trusted member of our family. So, Mr. Dandino, which I don't think I've ever called to that, but on behalf of the St. Lister of Washburn, thank you for your service. And for those who may not know, Dave started here like when we had Aiden. And so he built the whole infrastructure. He was the one that put it all together and figured it all out. And I said, so before we leave some name, if this is a legacy for the school, thank you.
Dave, you should come step on the X and make a bow. So that everybody can see. She's like, oh my.
All right, next on the spotlight, safety drill that we do in annual institutions, spring report.
That's required in the state, that in schools, the end of the year before September, reviews the year to make sure that we had all of our drills and then report out publicly any situations with seclusion and restraint.
At elementary this year, we had one incident of seclusion and four incidences of restraint that impacted a total of three students, which had IEPs, and we worked very closely with the families involved to ensure students had updated plans in place and were safe and successful moving forward. As for safety drills, we completed lockdown practice drill with the support and help of the Washburn Police Department, and also monthly fire drills and a tornado drill during severe weather week.
At the middle school, high school, in terms of seclusion and restraint, we did not have any instances of seclusion or restraint throughout the whole, the whole year, which is awesome. In terms of our safety drills, we did a lockdown drill with the support of the PD in November. We did fire drills every month, and then again during severe weather week, we also did our severe weather drills in it.
That's it? Thank you. This is the time for public comment. I'm not going to read as much as I did last month, if you are here, I hope you can remember everything I said. But I'm going to just remind you, if you would like to speak for public comment, each person has three minutes, and it's their time alone and cannot be passed on to anyone else. If you have concerns or comments about individuals, those are not appropriate during public comment times. So please don't say anything good or bad that would identify circumstances or a person or a group of people directly by what you say. Be respectful. People on Zoom are welcome to join public comment, just put your name in the chat. If you would like to address the board, is there anybody on the chat that wants to address the board?
Nothing yet.
Okay, if you can come forward, stand close to the mic, and state your name and your connection to the school.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Heidi Bitter, and all of my children went to this school. And I just, in the last two months, lost my husband. And instead of of keeping this, I took all the money that was in his memory. And I'd like to give this to the school.
For the Washburn School Lunch Fund.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. If there's anybody who knew Jan, who would have wanted the person he was, and will certainly be missed, we're sorry for your loss.
I'm super quick. I just want to say thank you. I feel heard. I've been concerned about the safety of some of our students and our staff and the inclusion that's happening or not happening, and hearing that read tonight feels really good. The vote that I see on the agenda makes me happy to see that there. And I love the opportunity to work with all of you and with the community. And so I just want to say thanks for all the hard work that you're doing and for the completion of another wonderful school year.
Anyone else like to address the board?
Elise Kaylee, just a community member, an interested community member. And I too am very encouraged to see the board considering making a formal declaration of LGBTQ Pride Month. And I've been fortunate to get to know several Washburn parents in recent weeks doing a great job raising their kids and who have been pushing on this. And time and time again, what they've heard, not from the board, but others in leadership, is that homophobic bullying doesn't exist here. And despite the fact that it's the students themselves coming forward and trying to make our community a safer place for everyone, a welcoming place for everyone. I moved to the Shawamican Bay area three years ago from a place that was not nearly as welcoming, as peaceful, as friendly, as trusting as this community is. And now I see that there are these great kids who are so much better at what they do than I was at their age, doing their best to work hand-in-hand with this board and make a more inclusive area and compel the school to treat homophobia and transphobia seriously. And I just want to applaud the board for what it's done so far and implore you to work with the kids, and when they say something needs to be done, they're right, because I don't think there's anyone who can be as cruel as a really, really homophobic high schooler or middle schooler and someone who has, you know, lived that, going through a school where Pride Month was proclaimed, but no action was taken against homophobic bullying. Whatever you can do to work with the kids who are trying to fix these problems, I urge you to do it, and thank you for what you've already done.
Hi, I'm Mike Monelock. I live in Carnacopia, but I'm interested in what you've got going on. As a parent of a gay son and a trans daughter, I want to support any school board that is supporting LGBTQ rights and equity. The bullying and the terrorism is real. I appreciate any help we can get. Thank you.
Hello. I didn't write a dissertation this time. I ran out of time, busy with this and that, and being a grown-up. I do definitely, you know, I want to thank, thank you guys for, you know, for listening to the community. You know, I have, my coworkers both have students here at Washburn School. You know, one thing that they say, you know, about their, their kids' experiences is that, you know, that sometimes it's hard to pick their friends, and like they'll see their friends get into bullying behavior, you know, against protected groups, whether it's, you know, queer kids or, you know, disabled kids or whatever. And they're afraid to stand up and say, hey, that's not okay, because there is a lot of fear that they are going to end up the target instead. I, I would ask that, you know, we look into ways of empowering students to stand up for each other. And I, I also, you know, I, I ask that maybe we, you know, look into, and as, as, you know, a member of the PFLAG Board, you know, I, I know we're talking to some of you about, you know, helping you strategize and things, and whatever we've got, you know, we can help with. There was, you know, a student that, you know, we sadly lost recently. She was not a member of, you know, the, the Rainbow Brigade, shall we say, but she had health problems, and what I heard from my coworker, from her daughter who goes here, is that this, this student had lost all of her friends when she got sick because they didn't understand, because she was different then. She became marginalized, and dare I say, it sounds like she was also sort of ostracized. So whether it's, you know, for LGBT or not, I, I think that's something, you know, maybe we can work on compassion and understanding. One last thing I want to say is, you know, I know we haven't had any of the really awful gun violence here. We haven't had, you know, some of the just really jaw-droppingly horrible things. But that going on in the rest of the country and the anti-LGBTQ laws and the laws against, you know, people with uteruses having control of their bodies, that may not be exactly happening here, but the fear of that, whether it's happening or not, students will fear, feel that fear. Thank you. Yeah, Beck.
I, Beck. UCK Valens.
William Slager, community member. I appreciate what you all have done. Just echo everyone else, and I, and the item on the agenda, I think, is excellent. But this, this last week, I had a conversation with a student out in the community who's been advocating for his rights. And, and I was complimenting him, and, you know, well done, all of that stuff, and he kind of looked at me and he said, "Sometimes I'd like to be a kid." And as we move forward with this, as the adults in the room, let's try to make as much space for all of these kids to be kids, to be teenagers, to have fun. Nothing wrong with advocating for yourself, but when they feel like they're fighting the adults in the room, I think, you know, we need to look at ourselves and see what we're doing to help them. So, thank you.
Hi. My name is Jenny Murphy, and I have an adult child who graduated Washburn, who now graduated Macross. I had an adult, I have an adult child who graduated from Bayfield, and I have a sixth-grade child here in Washburn. I have dedicated my life to public service as a law enforcement officer and EMT for 15 years, county government and now state government. Member of community efforts. I only say that because I want you to know how much I honor your service. I appreciate your service. I live your service experiences every day and respect the extraordinary personal challenges you face and difficult decisions. I believe staff at Washburn Elementary are doing their best to support my child. Principal Ivy is my child's kindergarten teacher, and I can see that she loves my child, and my child can feel that too. Staff do what they can to curb relentless bullying. My child can endure about their pronouns. Ivy accepts meetings with me and will talk with particular students to curb particular behaviors. These reactionary methods, while appreciative and necessary, are not the solution. Once the behavior happens, the damage to my child is done. There will be a lull in the bullying, but it will start off again. The solution is to seek an inclusive culture, to openly celebrate diversity, so every child in every hallway in the school can walk through their day as their authentic self. The goal shall be to make diversity the norm, rather than a handful of kids set aside, ignored as the exception. I support the resolution to recognize Pride Month in the Washburn School District. Let's be proactive about diversity rather than reactive. Let's let allies of diversity, the students having to watch and listen to the bullying, let's let these allies know it's okay and it's safe to call it out as unacceptable, to not have to tolerate behavior that ruins their school experience and hurts their friends. Celebrating pride in who we are is not controversial. It is an affirmation that should be offered rather than granted. We are all represented in the Pride Flag. We are all represented in the Pride Month Resolution. Our children will have a unique set of problems to solve, and also problems from generations of us who were too busy talking about which bathroom we were allowed to use. It's only with their authenticity that they will be able to break the cycle and meet these new challenges. Please create the space, acknowledge and celebrate their minds and their identities so they can just move on and do their important work.
My name is Tyler Singleton. I have a child going to Washburn School and a daughter that will go in the future. I respect what everyone is saying here today and everyone in the past. But I believe the problem lies within the parents, not so much the school. And I believe we, as parents, in a generational level, have failed our children to the extent of mental illness running rampant, as disguised as the sexualization of our children, which I do not agree with. And the LGBTQ movement, as far as I can tell, will not just stop at inclusiveness and the love of one's persona of how they see themselves, but it seems to be ending in pedophilia. And many bad things that it seems as though the pedophilia community, community are trying to gain rights. And as a parent of a child who's very impressionable, as I'm sure other parents have kids that are, I don't think the solution of rampant sexual assaults and pedophilia on this generation on a mass scale, I don't think the solution is to exacerbate and to give it a name and to say it's okay. I think we need to educate our kids to the full extent of what is truly going on here. And I respect everyone. I don't want to fight anyone, but I want the same respect as a heterosexual male and as a family man who is trying to raise a family in the way that I see fit to not have things shoved down my throat if I don't agree with it. The LGBTQ team, community wants to talk about respect and inclusiveness and respect towards the communication of both parties, but the more I see people open up about their opposing views on the subject matter, they're shut down very quickly and they're silenced. And I don't agree with that either. And I just, for one, want to say everyone is entitled to the way they want to live, as well as parents, how they want to raise their children. But I do not want social norms or what the large mass of people deem as acceptable to be pushed on my children. Thank you.
I'm DeeDee Mackey. I'm a mother of two children in the middle school, high school. And tonight, I just want to thank you. I want to thank you for focusing on education of our children, and I encourage the school board, the administration, and the educators to continue doing what they do well, and that's educating our children and providing resources for our children as needed. With many transformative experience with the Washburn School District, I have appreciated these efforts in the past, also knowing that there are plans in the future to continue with improvements and opportunities. I think the district is looking towards future needs, and I appreciate that greatly. I encourage this to be the emphasis of the folks up here. As parents, we need to remember the school board, administration, and educators are our partners. Our kids are so much better off when we work as a team. Teamwork requires communication, respect, cooperation, give and take. As a parent, it's, it's essential to me that I be involved in my children's education. I feel that Washburn allows me to do that. Thank you for that. And I know that doesn't happen in every district, and that does happen here. Though as a parent, I am one of the most important educators my children will ever have. By listening and being open to what others have, have had to say about my children, about the opportunities that they have, I feel that they've had some experiences that they never would have had if it was just up to me. There have been times when my eyes have been open. There are, at the same time, I haven't always agreed with everything, and that's okay, because we move forward and we continue to provide what we need for our children. I feel I listen to you. I feel you listen to me, and I feel that's what's best for my children. As we engage in conversation, we need to keep, keep what's important in mind, and that is our kids, and that's all the kids. With the conclusion of the school year, I want to say thank you for your efforts. I know it's not always easy. I know at times it's very, very difficult. I do hope that it's rewarding and that you can see where your efforts have really benefited our community and our children. Thanks.
I'm Mary Wichita, and I do not live in this school district. I live in the town of Lincoln, but I saw that this was happening, and I'm very grateful that this kind of open dialogue, this kind of support, this kind of discussion, willingness to, for people to speak up even if they don't agree, is happening. And one of the reasons I came here, I wasn't really going to speak, but my, my grandson has transitioned from age 12 to, he's about 14 and a half now. He was in the Broadhead School District. And in January, after a combination of in-person, out-person, being in treatment part of the time, et cetera, et cetera, he experienced so much bullying and harassment and lack of support in his school district that he threatened to live on the streets if he had to go back to Broadhead. And luckily, his mom was able to find him an alternative school in Madison, albeit with an hour commute each way. But that's not necessarily going to be the possibility for students here who may experience this kind of bullying or harassment. And so I'm grateful for all the work that you're doing, and I would urge you to continue to do that work. And also in light of this last gentleman's feelings, I think it's so important to keep having dialogue and keep trying to understand each other. I mean, it breaks my heart that the feeling is that LGBTQ people turn into pedophiles. We know there's no evidence for that, but I think the, the discussion has to happen, and the compassion and understanding has to happen too. So anyway, thank you very much.
My name is Allison Allen, and I am the aunt of a student here at the Washburn School. And I'm also a psychologist, and so I wanted to speak to a couple of things here and at other meetings and other places. I've heard the topic of mental health come up in regard to LGBTQ youth. And I think it's really important to clarify that there's nothing inherently related to mental illness that pertains to being LGBTQ. When those kids are talked about as having issues, it pertains to the bullying and the threats and the violence that they experience, not to their status as people. I think it's really important to make that clear. And I also just have to follow up, having treated many, many victims of pedophilia throughout my career, almost always, I mean, I think there are people who are, who have that issue across the board in the population, but almost everybody I've treated has been injured by a heterosexual man or occasionally woman. And I just think it's so important to push back against this idea that somehow supporting LGBTQ folks has anything to do with pedophilia. It's clearly unrelated, and it's an atrocious misunderstanding at best of its facts. Just wanted to clarify that. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Josie Montano. And I would just like to speak on the side of the parents that LGBTQ isn't even discussed in our home with our children because LGBTQ isn't even discussed in our home with our children because we find it's not necessary. It's not what color they like. It's not what they like to do outside, what their favorite food is, things like that. So this is all new. Our, our kids are new in this district and this is like kind of mind blowing that this has been a scuffle set at elementary school. It's so wild. So I just wanted to get that message over too, that there are so many other different views when it comes to this too. And it doesn't mean that anybody's right or wrong, but to look at the grand scope of it is, is larger than what you may think. And that's what I'll say.
Anyone else like to address the board?
My name is Colleen Lee. And um, uh, it breaks my heart that parents, uh, whatever their beliefs, have to worry about pedophilia. And I just want to say my stepfather was a pedophile. I experienced uh, impacted on the whole family of this. And he was a heterosexual. None of his children were gay. And um, I just, I, I hope that people that worry about pedophilia will among, as a result of uh, uh, Pride Month, will dig deep into some research and get some true facts about who commits pedophilia. And what happens to, and the sad part is much of the time it is family members, it's uncles and fathers and brothers and cousins. And I really do encourage people to get the real facts on this and not just you know, fall into their fear was, you know, maybe challenge that fear by, by getting some authentic facts.
I'm Charmaine Swan. I've got two kiddos here in the school district. I live in the town of Washburn. One at the elementary school and one in the, can, do I get to say in the high school since he graduated? Very exciting. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to the board for putting the item on the agenda tonight for the resolution to acknowledge Pride Month uh, as June, as Pride Month. Um, I just really appreciate you hearing when we came out last month and hearing and having that discussion on the agenda. So really, I'm hopeful that you vote in support of that and we can be in lockstep with the city of Washburn, the county of Bayfield and the state and Governor Evers. I also sent an email today to just about um, the setup here for when you're virtual. Um, and just even in this space, it's kind of hard to hear people when they're speaking. So if there was some way that, that could be considered um, for future meetings, either microphones or a different setup like the owl setup that I emailed about. Um, and maybe there's even ways to test those out without having to invest in that to see what would be um, good for this setting, but it's just really hard to hear. And it's hard to hear when you're on the screen and you, you can't really, you know, everybody's looking at like the back of me when I'm talking. So anyways, I'll just leave it at that. But thank you so much.
Um, I'm Lori Cannon. I live in the town of Washburn. I have a child in the elementary school. Um, and I just want to say, you know, I think it's really a lot of people um, have come forward and said, you know, kids, we need to focus on school. We need to focus on their education. Kids can't learn if they don't feel safe. So it's really important to have a safe environment for those kids. Regardless of what their needs are, they need to feel safe in that environment. And so, you know, yes, education, that's what we're all here for. But Maslow's hierarchy, they have to have safety first. So thank you for working on this subject and for putting the um, the resolution on the agenda and all the work that you guys do. Um, it's much appreciated. Thank you.
See if I see any more movement. Anyone else? Okay. Move on. Administrative reports?
Dave, you want to go first or you want to? So Dave's joining us to talk about a conversion, we're making over to the new telephone and internet service. Uh, a little with outages, a little with WISNET. And move to this less interruptions. Dave had been talking about that process.
Yeah, we are moving our current internet service provider from WISNET to Norvado. We've had a number of outages the last few years that have impacted us greatly. The latest example was on, actually it was Memorial Day. Luckily it was a holiday where it didn't affect school, but it went out at 1:00 AM and didn't come back until 8:00 PM. A aquatic accident. It was an aquatic accident.
Aquatic.
And then actually the following day, which was a school day, there was a two-hour outage from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. So we are moving to Norvado. And that's going to require installation of new fiber lines to the school. And the fiber line will be carrying our internet and our phone connections. Um, we'll be moving from Century Link phone service to Norvado. And we'll be moving our long distance service from Lumen to Norvado. And just the uh, monthly phone service alone will save us a hundred and thirty-five dollars a month. And by moving our phone lines to the fiber, this will give us a clearer path to upgrading our phone system in the future. Right now, our current system is end of life. It's still being supported. We have a support contract until June of 2026. So once the phone lines are converted over to fiber, we'll be ready to upgrade our phone system at any point after that. Uh, in my notes, I had the fiber installation to the elementary school, which was supposed to have started on Tuesday and be done before summer school. Got pushed out to today. And it didn't happen today either. Right now, the installers are working at the Bayfield School District. And it's taking longer than they anticipated to do that. And I called the Bayfield School District this afternoon and it looks like the fiber is to the building coiled up outside, so they're close. I wanted to get the installation at the elementary done first to not interfere with summer school classes, but um, they assured me that they have done these installations during school. And it hasn't interrupted anything. It's very unobtrusive how they install these lines. And then, once the elementary is done, they, they schedule a week to get one building done, they're going to move to the high school. So that'll be another week. Once they get fiber into the building, then they turn it over to Norvado. Norvado comes in and installs the network equipment. And at that point, we can switch over to the new provider. The drop dead date is June 30th because that's when our contract ends with our current service provider. So they assured me more than once that they will get it done. Um, it's costly to run these fiber lines. But Norvado agreed to waive the installation fee, which was nineteen thousand, one hundred and one dollars. If we agreed to a five-year contract. And that's what we did. So basically they're installing fiber to the schools for free. Um, the monthly internet services are cheaper, minimum is thirty dollars a month cheaper um, with Norvado. And once all of the equipment is installed, there's some backend configuration that I need to do before we flip the switch to the new provider. There's some reprogramming, reprogramming that has to be done with the firewall, some new addresses have to go in. And then there's some DNS service, I won't get into it, but we have to move our DNS service from the old provider to another provider. And like I said, this all has to be done by June 30th. That's when our contract expires and I submitted a removal request for that days to have our old equipment removed, so the pressure's on.
Dave, did you talk a little bit about redundancy that's going to help with Norvado versus what we have now?
Yeah, the, the main problem with WISNET and they didn't really own all of the fiber. It's several AT&T, it's Teach and uh, Century Link, I believe was the last mile carrier into the building. Whenever there was a fiber cut, there was no redundancy built in. So there was one path to get out everything. Once that path was cut, we're dead in the water until the fiber is repaired.
And that can happen anywhere within the WISNET network.
Correct. Yep. Norvado has built in redundancy to their networks. They're fairly new to the game. They uh, have a lot of new installations in the area. And they've built in redundancy and um, the customers that I talked to before deciding to go with this says they haven't had an outage since they've moved to Norvado. I think they consider it five nines, nine nine point nine 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 percent uptime, so. Hopefully, once we get moved to the new uh, provider, we won't have to worry about it.
Thank you. Thanks, Dave.
Other things going in the district is, you know, shutting down this school year, but already starting to uh, plan, more than plan, uh, starting to implement things for uh, the school year next year. Just uh, reminding the board, you know, work through your board retreat. And put some information in the shared drive. Um, start looking at the strategic planning process. So we have CISA 12 is going to work with us. I sent that, I think it's like a twenty slide PowerPoint. Uh, it's been talked about in long-range planning. We've been talking about it for a while. COVID things, but it's a fairly straightforward process. If you get a chance, take a look at that. Um, that's something you can also discuss at your retreats or start thinking about that for end of July, early August. Uh, opening a stool, we've shared with staff, um, the in-service for next fall. I mean, we have an admin troop, uh, guest teacher orientation, new teacher orientation scheduled and agendas are done. And also start setting district committees' dates for next year. I see you'll get a whole list of uh, calendar invites. Summer school's starting next week. Um, share with me that we have a a very nice, strong, very strong enrollment. I'm sure we'll report out in August on summer school. We um, Ivy, Angie worked on the uh, survey for parents on winter and it was a nice day today, but gathered that data. I think there was over two hundred responses so far. I shared with the board what we have. We're going to leave it open another week, then we'll close it down. And then we'll share that with the entire community, then we'll work at not only what the data is showing us on virtual days, um, but also how to utilize the virtual base, get into some of those parent comments, start looking at the quality of that virtual experience. Uh, that's the road that we continue to go. So that'll be uh, shared uh, with the community probably after next week. All right. I think that's it. Oh, uh, we had no new uh, open records requests from the last year.
Yep. Um, certainly hopefully. Uh, so I just want to start off graduation. It's great. It was the first one, first time I've done it here um, in Washburn and just watching these kids as my first year principal here was, I told them, there's no way I'm going to cry. I don't cry at these things. And then I got through the slideshow and I was like, okay, baby. Um, so it was just a great experience to have here with the kids here. Um, it went really smoothly. So I just wanted to, you know, it was pretty great. So if you were there and you saw it, you know what I'm talking about. But anyway, so I want to touch on that. Um, this is my first year here and so I've had a lot of time to kind of sit and reflect on some of the things that have gone on this year. What have I learned? What things do I see that maybe we can adjust a little bit? So I just want to touch on a couple of the changes that I've already put in place for starting for next year. And then how I'm going to build a team to help me with some of the others. So the first thing, one of the things we talked about that went right along with school improvement is our middle school math and social studies were in block classes, so they only had math and English for half a year. And as we looked at our data, we went, you know, that's probably not the best way to do this, to get them to be able to continue, continually improve um, in their skills. So we have now shifted our math and ELA in middle school to become full year courses. So they'll have math all year long and so they're not going to lose any of that information as we move forward. Um, we always have the summer slide, but we don't now have a full semester and a summer slide. So that's going to be beneficial to our kids. Um, we're going to start a days because minutes got pretty close for us at the middle school, high school level this year because of all the snow days and all the other crazy stuff. Um, so I shifted our bell schedule to start five minutes earlier. Um, it's not going to affect busing at all. It just gives them, instead of having twenty minutes to hang out in the morning to have breakfast, now they have fifteen minutes to hang out to have breakfast. So it won't affect too much. I shift passing periods based on uh, staff input on what they wanted. From five minutes, we're now going down to three minutes because it's a small building. We don't need, they don't need five minutes to get to where they need to go. So with that, that's adding on anywhere between thirteen and nineteen minutes a day, which is going to give us a multitude of extra hours for us to be able to focus on how do we look at testing days? How can we do other things now that we're not worried about meeting the minutes? Um, so that's just built in. Study halls are going to be shifted out of the LRC into classrooms. That's going to help with our academics and our achievement as well. It's going to give them a more structured study hall and a teacher in the room if they have questions um, or need help with anything. So that's going to be another thing that's going to benefit the kids. And just the happenings and some of the issues that have come up discipline wise with wandering. Um, putting those in the classroom, that's going to be very helpful with that as, as well. Um, looking at starting a, what we're going to call an SLT team or a shared leadership team here in the middle school, high school. The way that people are going to get chosen from that is first I sent out a form for teachers to nominate somebody to be on that team that they really view as a strong educational leader in the building, somebody who has good opinions, somebody that they trust. So we went through that part first. Um, at the very start of August, I'm going to send out an email to the staff with a form that says if you are interested yourself, you can apply. And then we'll go through a small interview process to make sure that I have the right people in the right spots. Um, so we're looking at probably five to six people, including myself for that team. That team will look at how do we continue to develop better discipline system in our building? How do we work through instructional practices? We're going to be learning together. Um, it really becomes a kind of like Knights of the Round Table type situation where everybody has their, their opinions and we can talk about it. We can go through some of that struggle and still continue to grow the way that we need to grow. So that'll be working on starting at the start of next year to help with some of those decisions as we move forward. Uh, the last thing I want to touch base on is the professional development committee. We sent out a survey, got tons of great results. So some of the things we'll be looking at integrating into our professional development next year will be things about integrating interventions and extensions. We'll be looking at adding more options for outdoor learning and how do we do that? Um, authentic engagement has been a big topic lately, trauma sensitive practices, restorative practices, other things we're going to weave in are going to be, you know, discussions and learning about marginalized communities, special education topics. Um, and all of this will, will support our staff with the learning by reaching out to the experts we have within the district as well as our CISA 12 community and the larger community as a whole. So uh, I will be reaching out later this summer to some of our G-safe connections. We're reaching out and having meetings with PFLAG um, to just be able to come up with different ways. Some of our G shape, G safe connections, we're reaching out and having meetings with P flag, um to just be able to come up with different ways to be able to. Teach and work with our staff so that we learn about all the different kinds of kids that we have and the things that we can do to support all of our kids in the building. So that's, that's where I'm at this summer and kind of hopefully working on this summer, so.
Um, elementary update, it's a little bittersweet as the school year closes out. There's a big wider uh wide range of emotions for students and staff. Um, excited, nervous, sad, scared, worried, relieved. I think we kind of feel all feelings that last week of school and even leading up to it. Um, but I am happy to say, uh, just as Dr. Rider mentioned, and really nice uh showing for summer school this year, so lots of students. Will be in our building uh each morning, receiving this free breakfast and free lunch available for all students, um actually all children, I should say. Zero to eighteen years old, and so that's a nice offering, as well as some really wonderful summer school classes. We also have CASCAR Kids childcare available in the afternoons. As well as in August when summer school's not available. Um, they have some really great field trips and learning opportunities happening. And then, of course, our ELC, our Early Learning Center, will be open all summer long. It takes a kind of one week for cleaning. Um, and we actually have new students joining us off of the waitlist uh next week, Monday, starting Monday, and so we have a full ELC all summer long. Um, just a quick update, there's no curriculum council meetings over the summer, but of course the work continues. So we've got lots of summer curricular curriculum work happening. I get to be involved in that work in those meetings and it directly aligns not only with the curriculum council work that we do. Professional Development Committee, but very closely aligning this year with our school improvement efforts that we've talked about so much this past year. Um, not only expanding what we've done so far, but then starting and continuing things for next year too. Um, I'm gonna hold off on school movement committee because I know that's a little bit later in the agenda, uh but then just to close out, um, summer is busy and. It's my favorite thing about being a principal, of course, of working with students. That's why I'm here, that's why we do what we do. I also love working with teachers, I love working on curriculum and instruction, um and our goal over the summer is to, to make the changes that we've heard from our students. From our staff and from our families, um to make that continuous improvement, to continue to make things better, so. Um, just a, a real quick overview of a few projects that are in the works. Uh, we'll continue to work on our curriculum, the way that we're sharing that and making it accessible for students and families. Continuing the anti-bullying trainings that we've done these last few years, um some exciting updates we're looking at for the last city, um extending that play area up there in the woods. Um, continuing character traits, um school, school presentations, um parent advisory committee, I mentioned previously, continuing to partner with PTO. Um, as Dr. Rider said, utilizing the survey data um that we received throughout the year to uh implement those changes for next year. Um, supporting teachers with their goals, buildings and grounds updates, um and just continuing that school group work that we've been working on so hard.
Couple things if I can just circle back, ELC, we're also continuing our discussions with St. Louis School. And the county, so we're looking at, you know, what it would be, what's the impact, how many rooms, we're gonna have to do a building assessment. It's great to talk about rooms and space and standard. But there's a level of expectation that we have to have for a building. Uh, there's a lot of expectation our parents have for where they have their children. Doors and security lights and doors and asbestos is on, so we're still talking, but we're gonna have a uh. Kind of a reality moment coming up like that next week, we're also to keep the board informed of, is this feasible? This day of month that would have to go into the building, that you could not own, but they want us to lease. It's a big investment on the front, so more information to come on that.
Are we expecting to make those improvements? Are they, that we will send those improvements that are needed?
From the conversations that we've had, that most of it is our responsibility. Uh, extra minutes, I think, will also add to the ability to address some issues at the middle school, high school for the end of the year, so having an extra time. It'll also give some flexibility, so how that school year ends will also be something that. We also need to thank Dave for uh live streaming graduation. Could have been from Aaron Cowan, I'm not sure, uh but they, they uh were able to uh join us for our graduation ceremony. And uh last, just to update the board, it'll be on the agenda, hopefully, uh new transportation contract negotiations are going. It's hard, hard old school bargain, you know, dealing with a bus driver shortage, a significant inflation. Uh, that's impacting their business, that obviously gets cast onto us as a contract. We're gonna do our best, um but it's probably gonna be some significant impacts. For them to be able to hire people, maintain people, their costs will up, that gets passed on. So more uh information on that as it comes available. We're optimistic that we're not gonna have any problems getting there, but. Might have to be a little creative. So we had a very. Good contract with the school district slides the last five months. Um, yeah, long, I mean, natural fit would be long range plan. Members, I mean, it's just, I mean, that, because they would have the buildings and grounds and the new plans, so yeah, we would like to do that. Just let me know.
Well, congratulations on a successful year, yes. And we're working hard on the next year. I know we've already started that a long time ago. Thank you. Um, we're dispensing with the financial.
Yeah, we're just gonna table that for.
Um, committee reports, policy committee.
Policy committee back, uh review the Neola updates. Um, those are online as well as an overview online for everyone to be able to uh look at. Some of the areas that um we've, um, obviously we have an opportunity to check boxes in terms of options, but we also have an opportunity to add. And under policy twenty one, twenty, uh twenty two, twenty one, special observance days, we've added something that. Uh, we need to recognize in our area just due to where we are in the state of Wisconsin, that's why we. Indigenous Peoples' Day, so there's those observance days, even though it's not in the state statute and it's not required by the state. The governor usually puts out a proclamation uh or makes that an observance day, so we added that language to policy. Um, there was two, two policies, they took one back because it's redundant with another policy that they found, and that was related to correct one. Everything else was fairly straightforward, uh and there was a new policy eighty eight oh two, which was patriotic observances and. Basically, that policy just literally the state statute. Schools are adding that, you know, to have that, we did not, I don't think we checked the one box. If there's a moment that's complained by the state, obviously we do that, but not just leaving that, no persons, you know, because it's all. Pretty straightforward, the rest of them, uh so tonight is only, uh and actually I haven't burned first year.
Thank you for covering that. Uh, yeah, they were all fairly easy changes. Um, so we do the.
Policies gets updated, and then we work on administrative guidelines after the policies are approved with second read. And then we make any adjustments and administrative guidelines, that's the end of the process that's following. So each of these may have a corresponding um guideline that would go along with it. Or there may be a box that we need to check in one of the policies that would lead to a new administrative guideline, that's what we're.
Um, because you said the words administrative guidelines, this brought to mind, I was looking in the policy. And I went to the administrative guidelines, and again, I found some names in there that shouldn't be in there. And again, in a different spot.
Okay.
And so I'm just wondering if those were, were updated or not updated, or am I looking in the right spot for them?
Let's, give me a call, we'll walk through it tomorrow, because everything is on the, there's archive for that you have access to. Public may have access to, that's not reflecting what the current changes are, so we can work through it.
Yeah, uh, I will let the, like, the note takers of the meeting, maybe do some.
I'll give a little overview and then feel free to chime in.
Okay.
Uh, so we have a school improvement committee meeting, um in just at the end of May. And so we had done one in the fall, we had done another one kind of mid-year, sort of following our district assessment data to ensure that we're making the growth that we want to see. And so the first thing we did was uh overview of our mission, our vision, our values, our goals, our collective commitments, because that's not only who we are and why we're here. Um, supporting students as becoming global citizens, uh but it's also how we make our decisions and what are our priorities and just keeping that at the root of the, of meeting. We then went over spring assessment data, we took special note of um growth and proficiency. Not only are we expecting students to make one full year's worth of growth each grade level, we're actually asking them to make more than a year's worth of growth, because that will. Close that proficiency gap, so uh that is a, a big party for us and something that we set as our, our number one goal. And we made nice growth in both math and literacy on that. Um, it is a slow process. And we actually had a moment of reflection and how does this feel? And it almost sounds a little like. We want to go faster, we're working so hard, our teachers are working so hard, our students are working so hard. Um, you sometimes expect those colors to change more quickly than they do. Um, but that doesn't mean we're not making the growth we want to see, and we are gonna, we find what works, we're gonna continue doing what works. We also wanted to make note of the growth and proficiency from fall to winter, as well as winter to spring. Because what happens often in districts around the state is that there's a big growth in the fall and then it could stay static in the spring. And that's a, a great trend for us to try to overcome, and we did see that in multiple grade levels, that was exciting too. Uh, we then took a, a little review of our school improvement work and the goals we have this year. What growth made on each of those, any of those cycles that were complete, any of them that we're gonna continue into the summer and into next school year. And then we readjusted our priorities for next year based on the success that we've had, or the areas that we want to see more growth. And so we're gonna continue focusing on instructional minutes and practices. We're gonna continue working with the, the standards, the state standards in each grade level. And we're gonna continue working on improving um the curriculum resources that we're using. The two goals we're gonna add is focusing on the depth of knowledge, what we're finding is our students are picking up new information very quickly. But what we want to now do is go much deeper with that information. This is gonna be beneficial for all students. And is really going to just have a multitude of benefits. And then the last one is, um, we're ready to really focus on our intervention system. All students have strengths, all students have challenges. And we want ready to start to individualize that support to address those strengths, support those challenges and ensure every student. Uh, has a really high quality educational experience. Uh, one more piece of data that we did take a look at was some projections for. The, what the state's uh scores will potentially look like on score for current next fall. Uh, we don't know for sure because we don't unfortunately get to see that data until the end of the summer. It's not released to the public till October. But it's very close aligned with our STAR assessment, and so STAR has an option that actually shows what that projection looks like. Um, and we saw significant growth um in mo- in many, many grade levels. We did see a little bit um of some regression, we're gonna look a little bit more deeply into this uh at the high school level, and we're gonna figure out, is that correct data, what's going on here? Um, and that's a, one of the projects Andy will be looking at this summer, um but some very exciting things happening, middle school level, elementary level. And I think the school improvement team is um all committed to continuing the work and continue to next year, building level and district level.
End of the year meeting, we talked to staff, we thanked them for their. Reminded them that. You put in this effort, you want to see everything jump over the greens, and we reminded them of the two years of interrupted instruction. Academically, but we also saw really engagement in behaviors in district wide for some students. Uh, it's gonna take, it's time to just be patient, uh structurally, everything is there. Enthusiasm's there, the dedication of our raising staff is there, the students are responding. Two years of something is gonna take us time to get back to where we expected this.
I just wanted to chime in and add to that, I think that um. The tools that we use to like measure our success are not just the tools that we see here. And I really have a lot of like faith and confidence in the, in the team that's been working on this, that they understand what helps a child thrive. And outdoor learning, I thought was like priority two, or like one of their goals for next year. It's like, so they, they really get it, and it just really felt very encouraged after that. I don't know. Chime in.
Oh, yeah. Very, very cute. I, I said at the meeting, and it's, it's, it's impressive to see. As, as a new person to the, to the team, I guess, uh the amount of work that you guys put in. Way before you see any results, or you know, way before you even try to implement. Stuff, all the research, all the work that goes into it, it's, it's really mindful, so it's, and you, you do see the results. So, you see how kids, you see smart kids, you see well-rounded kids.
That's it. Consent agenda. I'm to approve the consent agenda.
Is there any discussion? Our favor. Discussion items, CISA twelve update.
Yeah, that was our reorganization meeting, um. We approved the hire of the youth apprentice coordinator pending funding, and we did get a very high amount of students from districts. That are gonna participate in that, so it's really good, really nice. Um, building update, closing date for the sale is June thirtieth. Um, districts will receive a check for their share of the proceeds. Approximately, well, he was saying between twelve thousand and fourteen thousand. So. And hopefully that would come by.
She's already looking at me saying, don't even think about it.
So our um next meeting is in August, so we don't have one in July, but um. More than likely gonna tour the new building, it's not quite ready yet for people to come in, but. So when we do, I'll take pictures so you guys can see, and then um. The meetings and different kind of events are gonna be held at Hotel Shalam again in their conference area. So that's where it's contracted through, because the food is right there, we don't have to have. Such, so I think it's gonna work out.
So they have to be out of the building, right, Adrian?
No, they're gonna um give us the, the new people that bought it, they're gonna give us. Quite a while to move out, and they're giving us an area to store things for up to. No, I can't remember the name, I can't remember the name, but they bought numerous places in town to convert buildings into. Can't think of the name. It's not local.
We just want to recognize that Epic Earring and Mass of Goodness were awarded the um Frasier Teacher of the Year this year. And so that is a.
That's a great honor. Nominated and selected by your peers for your outstanding work, this, and they were honored to have a, and then your district staff.
Very nice. Um, middle school has the building project.
Have the sign the agenda, just as a lot of information that was presented last month. Put it out tonight just to get some feedback after a month of thinking about it from the board. We don't need to decide anything tonight in terms of, we're less than this or less than this. The only action I've been, I'm making is to move into phase two, whereas that would be to start looking at all those possibilities. Surveying staff, surveying community members, getting feedback that'll help us make our final decision on what we want to do. Uh, but I just wanted to throw it out there from the board's perspective, anything that jumped out at you or some initial thoughts. Any questions on phase two, because it's only a part of, it's a twenty five hundred dollar, these things that we go into with my. Their marketing people come in, we start looking at. Option one, option two, option three, and start setting things up. We also start running some financial numbers. But that's kind of phase two, but wanted to just to put it on the agenda to get some feedback from the board on their initial thoughts from the big numbers.
They were big numbers.
They were very big numbers.
Was anybody had any thoughts or? One discussion items other than it was really big numbers?
Well, I think that the, it sounds like the phase two. That we'll be able to then dial it down. It's like, we just don't have the capacity, you know. That will be able to then dial it down. It's like we just don't have the capacity, you know? So so my assumption is that the approval is just to be like, yeah, that's the numbers. Like, this is what it takes, like. You know, you don't necessarily need a second opinion, but this is the this is the basis of how we'll perform it.
We wanted some feedback tonight from the board to make sure that yes, continue, because then we'll have long-range planning come back. Maybe a meeting early, you know, in the middle sometime, whenever we can schedule that. Uh and then we'll start working with Myron on that thing too. But just wanted to make sure that the board was good information, well-spent money. Let's move in to gather more data for phase two. If you're okay with that, then we'll improve phase two.
And maybe this was said and I don't remember it, but I'll ask the question. Was there ever a um timeline according to? Um how long we could survive in this building before things really starting going down?
Yeah, that is in phase one in terms of when you look at those, what needed to be done immediately.
Yes.
There's a number. What you can put off for like, you know, I think the range was three to five years and then five to ten years, but there were some that were. Must do now. And then what that phase two will do is they'll break that down into, okay, we heard you about what do you need right now? And there's the cost and prepare some of those. That'll be more information. There is those, I think it's red. Yellow, green ratings on that sheet.
And that was like zero to two years is how they phrased it.
We were optimistic on any one of those options, things get paired now.
It was just that there was like some comparables, so I think I, it's like the plan that they were thinking about was like. One twenty-five square feet. And then there was like comparables, like, oh, this is what, like, this is another. Building, you know, south of here. And those approximate costs seemed like. Smaller. Is that because those schools went through their phase two? Yeah, okay, they like. And they can spend more than we can because they're larger districts.
Also in phase two is when they start looking for potential. Bring everything to the dump day, recycling day, and I put it on gossip. I want what's a square, you know, what's that foot, that look like? And they have nine acres with the ability to potentially get another twelve of someone who owns it. With that. You have to get rid of, as C says, you know, that's pricey to do with a. But that compared to buying a a midsection somewhere. So we're looking, phase two will also start looking at all options.
Yeah, so A G R scans for achievement gap reduction, um state funding that we receive, uh and it's very much closely aligned with the school improvement. So we set actually the very same goals, increase um in one grade levels worth of growth as well as increase in proficiency. But A G R only uh focuses on kindergarten through third grade. Uh which is actually kind of a nice compliment because state testing is third enough. So it really creates a comprehensive school improvement plan. Um they outline the three strategies that we can use though, and of course we use many strategies in addition to this, but the three that were. We must select at least one or more of those strategies would be class size reduction, smaller classes. Uh one-to-one tutoring, math and refer to that as tier three interventions and instructional coaching, which often happens to. Our interventionist specialists and special education teachers. And so we um complete this each year, something that we've done for many years. And we use um two or three of those strategies in every grade level kindergarten through third grade. Uh let's see, we have seen a really nice growth in proficiency, especially this year, um more so than previous years. Because of those specific school improvement efforts we implemented district wide. As we saw a really nice growth in proficiency in math and reading in each of those grade levels kindergarten through third grade. Um so we will continue those efforts and we continue to monitor that. And that will be submitted to the state and we receive funding each year. And that funding is used to um support our interventionists and um the resources that we use to. To uh put those improvement efforts into place. And uh let's see, just a couple of things. We do see this as an interesting trend, uh decrease in the number of students who are proficient. Every year, just a slight decrease, but very steady. And this is common in many districts, kindergarten, first, second, third, just decreases a little bit each year. And we actually saw a break in that trend this year with our A G R data, which was really exciting. Um and something that I'm very excited to push forward with and so that we do not have a decrease in proficiency. We actually have either stable or increasing proficiency. So I'm excited about that.
Well, that's really exciting.
That is, right?
Those early grade loans.
Yeah.
Although they have both building blocks and a proficient, that allows everything to go on that third, fourth, fifth, sixth.
Yeah.
That's exciting.
It is, yeah. Um and then we continue, this is something we do every year, but just to continue this process and continuing through this process. Um of course, we're going to go with these school improvement efforts that we talked about previously. Uh we're gonna increase consistency in the data measurement that we use. Um some of those district assessments like STAR. Uh a thirty-question uh assessment on iPad is not really effective the younger you are. And so we do use different measurements, but now what we're doing is we're actually doing multiple measurements, finding that balance to have an accurate. Uh portrayal of the whole student without overtesting. And so we're gonna continue to make sure we have the right tools in place at the right grade levels. And then just increase teacher involvement. We have uh excellent, excellent teaching staff. And uh just continue to utilize those strengths, those ex- experts. They are providing professional development in both of the staff meetings. Uh on a weekly basis and just continually doing that um as part of our school improvement efforts.
Just need to. This is not a time for us as we come out of COVID dollars to look at eliminating things that we desperately. Continue to need. So these levels of support, even though the money did come through some COVID dollars. We have to reprioritize our budget to make sure that these interventions, these class sizes. The amount of support that the kids have, it needs to stay. So that's a priority when we are developing this budget that. These are three might be gone, or we may have some a little bit we can carry over. But we cannot stop what we have started. So that's gonna be just a, when we talk about scarcity of resources. That's not an area that we can recommend looking at because those class sizes, the intervention, the amount of time that's needed to get these children. Where that that needs to continue to be our priority. It has been, it just needs to continue to be our priority. Stress out about a state budget that's not finalized yet. Um July first coming up. Staffing, we have to get the best people, keep the best people, and it's gonna cost us.
We will continue that. We found a really nice program and we'll continue that model. So as of right now, it'll it'll continue the same as it was last year. And if we have any staffing changes, we would, uh I would very strongly advocate to continue that that type of program.
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
Uh just asking, continuing the math interventionist position and, yeah.
So we hired.
Uh we have no resignation at this point, so we's current current situation.
There's a possibility.
Yeah, pretty much. But yes, either way, it's a, it's a nice model. I want to keep that.
Okay, I would like to.
Have you said, I'll I'll see, it's not in six.
Uh okay, I would like to read a resolution to recognize June as Pride Month. And affirm its commitment to ensuring that Washington schools are safe and supportive environment for LGBTQ plus students and staff. Whereas June is recognized as Pride Month throughout the United States. And whereas the progress pride flag and iteration of the widely recognized rainbow pride flag. Created to symbolize the inclusion of marginalized communities within the LGBTQ community. Will be flown at the state Capitol and around the state during the month of June. And whereas on June first, two thousand twenty-three, Governor Tony Eber will claim June twenty twenty-three Pride Month. In the state of Wisconsin. And whereas the school district of Washburn policy two, 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 one. On special observance days, states that the district will recognize special observances proclaimed by the governor. In addition to the days listed in the policy. And whereas the city of Washburn and Bakersfield County both recognize and celebrate Pride Month. And whereas the Washburn community demonstrated a commitment to inclusivity. For LGBTQ plus students through heartfelt personal stories from parents, students and community members. At the May twenty twenty-three school board meeting. Therefore, let it be resolved that the school district of Washburn joins the state of Wisconsin. Bakersfield County and city of Washburn in celebrating Pride Month. And further be a resolve that the district endorses the year-round efforts of administrators, teachers and students. To create a safe and supportive environment for LGBTQ plus students, staff and allies. And I would entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll second.
All favor? Motion, or any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Um I would like to call for a motion to approve the first reading of the policy updates.
Well, this just stated on.
As stated on the agenda. I move to approve uh the first reading of the policy updates and stated.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion theory. Discussion and call for both of open enrollment students who are twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
And just in your packet, um shared with the board, we have twenty-three students who have. Alternative open enrollment period of time for our school district, so that's uh twenty-three new students. Breakdown is fifteen open enrollment to us from Ashland. Six new, these are all new, six new from Bayfield, one from Maplewood. Uh we have three out, so there's still a positive for graduation, more students coming. Uh we reviewed all their folders, files, I E Ps. Um I E Ps after their approval, we invite, we don't have to lose, but we invite all of the students under five oh four and I E P just to connect with us and with their teachers. Make sure we review the plan, tours at school, just make them feel nice and comfortable.
Make a motion to approve the student for twenty-three.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All favor? Call for a vote to approve Myron's phase two approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Janet, of course, I'll make that motion. I have a question about it. Is there a title there? Twenty-three, isn't this supposed to be twenty-three to thirty-four?
All in favor for twenty-three, twenty-four? Uh vote to approve the coastal wilderness inquiry trip for the summer of twenty twenty-three?
So, second.
Any discussion?
Cool experience for kids that get out, see a part of the area that they they live in, get a kayak and can move in camp. So it's a fun experience. It's nice that it's back. We had to take a little time off. Nice to get the kids back into those activities.
All favor? Uh vote to approve the middle school rush range trip in the fall of twenty twenty-three? One second. Any discussion?
Again, another opportunity makes Washburn, Washburn, as these kids move out of elementary and into middle school. Wait for them to connect as a class, get out, get in the woods, really embodies our mission as a school district. So really nice transition for their kids.
Has that been a tradition?
This year was the first year that it happened.
It was supposed to happen before.
Yeah, yeah.
I would say, you know, my son went on that this year and it was a a wonderful introduction and transition. It really just solidified the class. It was a nice jump off and for the parents too.
All favor? Approve lunch prices for the twenty twenty-three to twenty-four school year.
State gives us options, there's four options that are not, uh we're recommending option four, you have to get caught up. You have to cover those costs, so we move to just go with what the state's gonna require us to do. So we go with that recommended increase for the lunch prices for at those dollars. Um a little higher than normal uh due to just inflationary costs that, you know, everyone's facing, so. It's better to take. All of it now versus saying, well, we'll do a little bit now, a little bit, you know, next year and then wow. As it goes up, we're just gonna continue to do what the D P I recommends.
All favor?
Some of those that I have a question. Okay, so can you tell me, the director of special education and people services, how is that going to be used?
Just as a, as we're looking to transition, uh we're gonna give C S an opportunity because we're not sure what that restructuring may look like. Bringing them in, getting them used to us, having us get used to them. Uh they mainly would come in and just do, you know, D P I reports, double-check I E Ps. And really start leaning on professional development side from that uh special ed director leader type role. Uh as we look to significantly make some changes, but also improve the quality of our services uh district wide, so. Uh getting just that extra lens that can just focus in on just that. I think it's gonna be a nice step. We'll then be able to assess after a year and say, okay. Now that we have this paired and we need to maybe look at it differently, is C S an option that gives a year to be able to assess?
Who will those people be?
Uh I'm assuming it's gonna be. It's one of those two. They haven't committed yet to a school. They just first get the contract and then they'll talk this about, but it's either.
So then they'll review the I E Ps also.
Could be part of that process.
All favors? Uh approve the contract should we replace two banks of license for Paul Field? So moved. Second. Any discussion?
Buns come out of fund forty-one, fund forty-six, or these major project things that come up. Two banks don't work, um they don't make parts. Uh we'll do this in phases, so two this summer, two next summer, and then we'll have that uh illuminated for space on. And more energy efficient.
Any other questions on it? Um favor? Um approve someone teen contract for E O E for elementary.
Yep.
From Northwoods, back and cleaning. So we'll second. Any discussion on that?
Building of the elementary is utilized all the way through, and that was the August, um they come in, they've done a nice job for us. Building of the elementary is utilized all the way through, and that was the August. Um, they come in, they've done a nice job for us.
Everything coming on the classroom, keep cleaning the classroom carpets, everything, top to bottom, put it back in. The type of just.
We're still short, the stadium elementary nights. First thing is going back out, many have summer, who's interested to come over from the county. So. That may help us just with the maintenance of it, but um, that short window. Lack of summer workers that we had back in the days, you know, college kids would come in, the kids just that one through summer. They're just, they're just not working. So it's been something to use and they do a nice job.
All favor? I think. Opposed? Motion carry. Um, approve only check for the I T technicians of the school district for Washburn. Some of. Second. Discussion? All favor? Opposed? Motion carry. Um, offer want to approve Dave wasn't up for the high school's head teacher.
Second. I want to make that one. I would like to vote maybe Dave was up as high school's head teacher.
You still want to second?
I still second. Can I second it? No.
Any discussion?
Uh, as you can see, the dittiness are incredible, very excited that he was going to be able to join. The music's a wealth of information, experiences in and out of school and so the ability to connect with kids, organize.
Sure we be good.
Yeah.
If you don't want us to tomorrow and then.
Uh, it's a great opportunity for us as we look to really ramp up some things for our school. So none of the two pieces that is now on. These two are kind of a joy.
I'll say a question, opposed?
No, no, it's about something else.
Okay, all favor? I. Opposed? Motion carry. I just wanted to ask Tom again, or I didn't. Um, about the shared service agreement. So does that mean that Jen and or Megan would be the L E A? At the I T age?
Probably not year one, um, maybe just working with us, but it's not year one. I mean, we're going to continue to work with children. It's a very, as you know, it's a very personal relationship in I E P and bringing in someone and you're new to that. Uh, no, it'll still, it'll still be our, well, not new, new, but I mean. Those relationships, they're difficult sometimes just adding that awesome. So L E A will continue with us. Now that we brought that up, I did also talk to Allison and she's going to continue this. Had a nice conversation today, like I said, much, but I gave you the time. Just sure you can have a good day.
Thank you, everyone. We'll do a review of the motion to. He gives my mood toger. Second. Third, does anybody want to, um, replace Stephanie? Or.